I'll ask Reverend David Mosley with the First United Methodist Church to give my opening prayer.
See, I'm not doing this, put you in the house.
Yes, microphone.
Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator of all that is, Bringer of life and community.
Yes.
We are grateful for a time and place to stand up and be counted for that community, to take responsibility where we are able, for the good of all. As this group meets today, may it be that there be sufficient grace to hear wisely.
Yes.
To discern carefully and to vote according to the good of this community that all may benefit and that we all may be proud that these are our servants, your servants. We ask these blessings in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brother David. Good to have you with us. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Sir, Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney Peoples.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Counselor Monday.
He's absent.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Tyrone.
He's absent.
Counselor Carter.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Cat, he's not here. Counselor Pulliam.
Present.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
And Counselor McLendon.
Present.
Seven out of ten present, sir.
Coram President, we will proceed with our meeting. We have no bid openings today. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation on Keep America Beautiful, and I'll ask Councilwoman Mrs. Lorraine Robinson if she'd come and receive this proclamation.
Before you do that proclamation, I'd like to mention about Counselor Monday. He had a doctor's appointment that he couldn't get away from.
Oh, okay. And I heard from Counselor Cat, he was gonna be out of town. I knew he wouldn't be here either.
Okay, very good.
I asked Ms. Robinson to come because this has been her project, and she's worked tirelessly on it for the last three or four weeks, put in a lot of time and effort on it, and I ask her to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Keep America Beautiful Incorporated Organization. Whereas the legislative and executive branches of the city of West Memphis salute our citizens on their commitment to keep America and West Memphis beautiful. And whereas Keep America Beautiful Incorporated is a national nonprofit organization which is dedicated to helping individuals improve their community, their environment, and has established a Great American Cleanup as its signature national effort involving American citizens' environmental stewardship. And whereas Keep America Beautiful: Great American Cleanup is celebrating its 28th anniversary in 2012, they are featuring over 3.8 million volunteers participating in over 30,000 events over 16,000 communities in all 50 states. And whereas the city of West Memphis is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods, and we seek to protect and improve our community through the action of citizens, schools, government, and business all working together. And whereas the West Memphis City Council has recognized the important commitment to improve American communities and will do so through litter provision, beautification, and solid waste management initiatives. We are committed to help spread the word about the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our community to become better stewards of the environment. Therefore, I, William H. Johnson, Mayor of the city of West Memphis, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the 5th of 2012, as Keep America Beautiful: Great American Cleanup Day. And I call upon all the citizens to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help us to renew our commitment to building a better world today for the future generation. Congratulations. I'm certainly glad she took this project under her wing and took it over. She'll do a good job because, I say this very respectfully, she'll worry you to death if you don't. She will get it done. Would you disagree with that?
I will not disagree.
Thank you, Lorraine. The presentation from the Fire Department will have to be added to next week's agenda. They were, Center Point Energy was unable to attend today. Any additions or corrections to the minutes that you received in your packet?
Make a motion to accept.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to accept. All in favor by aye. Opposed? They are approved and accepted. Under Old Business, we have the second reading of an ordinance approving Lisa's Perfect Paws for Dog Grooming. Would you read it for the second time?
This is the second reading. The second reading is by title only. The title of this ordinance reads as follows: An Ordinance Approving the Hiring of Lisa Suggs Doing Business as Lisa's Perfect Paws for Dog Grooming for the City of West Memphis and for Other Purposes.
Concludes the second reading. Could I have a motion to suspend the rules and places on this third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Would you read it for the third time, Mr. City Attorney?
Again, the title reads: An Ordinance Approving the Hiring of Lisa Suggs Doing Business as Lisa's Perfect Paws for Dog Grooming for the City of West Memphis and for Other Purposes.
Concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Would you give that ordinance a number?
The ordinance is number 2298.
May I make a motion? We read R. 1 and O. 1 by Tyrone.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to read the next two items by title only. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Would you read the title to R. 1?
Title of this resolution reads as follows: A Resolution Expressing the Willingness of the City of West Memphis to Utilize Federal Aid Monies for the Following City Project: Reconstruction of Southland Drive from Ingram Boulevard to the East West Memphis.
You've heard this resolution read. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Would you give that resolution a number?
Resolution number 2004.
Would you read the title to O. 1, Mr. City Attorney?
Title of this ordinance reads as follows: An Ordinance to Amend Zoning Ordinance 1988 as amended in regards to permitted uses in a C-2 commercial districts. Article 3, Section 2, Paragraph B, Number 2. Industrial uses permitted... permitted in a C-2 commercial district. And Paragraph C, Lot, Yard and Height Regulations, Footnote B, and for Other Purposes.
That concludes the first reading. We will have it on the agenda at our next meeting for the second reading. Under permission request, we have a city emergency response plan. Inspector Shelton, I believe, is here to address that. Inspector?
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
This is basically just revision of the plan that we have in place already. It's just updating the rank structure on our, the police department's response to the rank structure we have now.
Is that in a formal statement?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe we have a copy of that.
Did you give it to us earlier and we've forgotten, or?
That was supposed to have been put...
I think it was last council meeting, wasn't it?
Last council meeting in the packets for revision.
Okay.
It was. Okay, that's...
The whole thing's on DVD. It's a huge ordinance, a huge thing.
And the whole plan itself is about 700 pages long. That revision was maybe eight pages.
I believe it was in the last council agenda, in the bracket. What are you feeling on it? It was in the one. It was not put back in this one. Do you want to approve it? Or since we all had it?
Could I move it table it because, in all honesty, I really don't remember.
I don't either, and I apologize, Inspector Shelton. I will...
I'll put it on the next, I'll put it on the agenda for two weeks.
Thank you.
We just put it on... You know, it's not anything urgent today anyhow. We'll have it on the next one.
Thank you.
You have Planning Commission Recommendations in your packet. If you've reviewed them, I need a motion and a second to approve Planning Commission Recommendation. So moved.
Second.
All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Paul Lucre and his guest has a presentation on a regional planning grant. Paul, do you want to introduce the young lady and the program?
Mayor and Counsel, we have Jennifer Watkins here today from Community Builders. And they are here, they're going to be the consultants on a planning effort that we're about to get started. I think a lot of y'all have been invited to sit on the steering committee. We'll have, we're calling it Plan Week, and it'll start, it's actually just a day and a half, May 15th and 16th. I knew it'd be hard to get everybody together for a week, so we condensed it into a day and a half. And we appreciate all the support that has been coming in from the requests for people sitting on the steering committee. But this effort grew out of a grant that was received by East Arkansas Planning and Development District from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And it's to develop economic development strategies for communities in the Delta. And Jennifer will tell you how this works. I'll probably get it all mixed up. But basically, we'll have our local plan that will then plug into a county plan and into a regional plan. And what this is, what this is leading us towards is working together to improve our economic development power in this region. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer, and she'll do a much better job.
Well, thank you very much for having me today, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. It's really a pleasure to watch you in action. As a former city employee, for about 13 years, I went to hundreds of council meetings, and I can tell you, they didn't run as smoothly as this one is running. So I applaud you for that. It's really nice to see. And thanks, Paul. Paul has been very, very helpful throughout this whole process, and he's done just a fantastic job plugging into this entire regional process and getting things going here on a local level. So I really want to thank him for all of his efforts. As he said, I'm Jennifer Watkins. I'm with Building Communities, and we are a consultant that has been hired by the East Arkansas Planning and Development District to conduct a series of strategic plans within their 12-county region. Can everybody see this okay? As Paul talked about, this is a grant that was received from the Housing and Urban Development, and they partnered with the Department of Transportation and the Environmental Protection Agency in putting this program together. This is a new, kind of a pilot program for the federal government to see which agencies can really feed off of each other and partner to conserve resources, as we all know, those are getting a little tighter. So they awarded quite a few grants, but not that many. If you look across the nation there, and we're lucky that East Arkansas was one of those chosen to go through this process. And I will tell you that they are looking at this process very, very closely. There's been a lot of work done in the East Arkansas Delta on planning, but they really want to see what we can do out here to try and improve the economic situation this time around. So our region, we have 12 counties in the region, including this county, and 11 of your closest neighbors. So this is the area that the East Arkansas Planning and Development District serves. And I'm going to talk briefly about their role, and then I'll get more into what we're going to be doing in the next couple of weeks. Their role is really to oversee the entire regional planning project and make sure it's done right. They have to administer that agreement with HUD and make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and on and on and on. They need to communicate with all of the stakeholders. So there will be some press releases, some newsletters, things like that coming out. We hope that you all will sign up for those, probably an e-newsletter. So we would definitely like to get all of you on that so that you can keep up with what's happening with this grant. Two people from the district who are key to this are Pam Alexander. She's the project director, and she's also the deputy director for the district. And Brian Thompson, he's not the project director, he's the project manager, but he has just come on board as the project manager. He's going to be kind of the day-to-day manager of this project. And just briefly, I'll go over the different components of this total regional plan. The first thing that's really, really important is the community engagement piece, which is one reason why I'm here today. We want to make sure that the word really gets out in the communities where we're going to be doing work. We want to reach those areas of the community that may not have always been involved in strategic planning and regional planning. So if, we need your help to help get the word out on these processes, to bring those people into especially the community meetings to give their input. Data management, we're going to be collecting a lot of data as we do these. And so all of that stuff is going to be available to you and your staff and your committees as they're going through other processes, and hopefully it will be of some help. Underutilized asset inventory, this is kind of a unique process that we're doing in this region. Arkansas State University is going to be leading this effort. They're looking at some of the large underutilized assets in this region. Things like the Air Force Base that's been closed or the transportation network that you might have here, especially in West Memphis. Those things that really could be used a lot more if they were really developed to their potential, what it would take to do that, and putting together an analysis of all of those top regions or top assets across the region. Community-based planning, that's what I'm going to talk a little bit more about today. That's our role in starting out this local strategic planning process and getting your ideas all on the table so that we can then bring that together into that last one, the Regional Sustainability Plan. Land Use Transportation Scenario Planning, that's another aspect of this. We have a good contractor called Reseed Felipe Zubia. He's going to be out here for the Plan Week that Paul was talking about. So many of you will be able to meet him. He basically comes in after the plan is done, after the strategic planning process is done, and starts looking at how everything ties together and does some scenario planning for you. The housing planning, we have another contractor named James Gilliland, and he is going to be doing a regional housing analysis for the 12 counties. And then visioning and modeling. So those assets that we talked about, those large assets, we're really going to be doing a lot of modeling for those to really show some good visual examples of what they could look like at build-out. And then all of that will culminate in a Regional Sustainability Plan for the region. This is just a general overview of the timeline for this. This is really a 36-month regional planning process. So it's going to take a lot of work over the next three years. All right. Talking a little bit about us and the process that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Building Communities, Inc., we started this, well, it's been a work in progress over the last many years. I've done economic development for about 15 years, and my partner, Brian Cole, has been doing this for about 25 years, and mostly in rural communities, in Oregon a lot. But through that, we've learned a great deal about what works and what doesn't in small communities. And so we've put together this selection of about 25 different strategies that we feel have a very good chance of success in rural communities, depending on what your assets are. This is a very fast approach. As Paul said, we're condensing it, but it's really 13 hours. We go through a planning process that's 13 hours long, and by the end of it, you pretty much have your plan ready to go. It's very objective. We don't talk a lot with each other and really think about how we feel. We do anonymous voting, so people can really weigh in on what they think the assets are. And we, everything is ranked based on that voting. So it's not very subjective. It's very, very objective in its preparation. And it's fast. Like I said, 13 hours, and you're going to be done. Well, at least done with the easy part, I should say. Then you get to implement it, and that's the hard part. So our goals are obviously to improve your economic conditions and improve your quality of life. We not only look at those 25 business development strategies, we also look at quality of life initiatives. What you want to put in place in your community that will make your community a better place for you, for your children, for your grandchildren. And that's one thing that's pretty different about this strategic planning process. So a little bit about what we call Plan Week. Sometimes it's two days, sometimes it's five days. So we just call it Plan Week to make it simple. It's going to be May 15th and 16th. I hope that you can all come. We need input. That's what we need. We don't know anything about your community, really. I mean, I can go on and look up all the statistics, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to know anything about it. You folks are the ones who really know about your community and can really weigh in on what your community has, what it doesn't have, what it wants to do. So that's why it's important to have a good steering committee, and Paul has put together a tremendous list of people. But I hope that all of you can come. On the first day, which will be Tuesday, May 15th, we're going to start at 9:00. We're going to go till noon, and then we're going to start back up again at 1:00 and go until 4:00. And that night, we will have the Voice of the Community Session. That's the open house, the open town hall that I'm hoping everybody listening out there can come to that. It will be here, and it will be from 6:00 to 8:00. And that's where we will show some of the results from the morning sessions and really get feedback from the community on what they think you can do and what they want you to do and what they will be willing to help you do. That's the other piece of it. Then on Wednesday, we're going to start again at 9:00, and we're going to end up about 3:00 o'clock that day. And we'll have a break for lunch, of course. But that's really where the nuts and bolts comes together. You look at all of the results, all of these things that you voted on, how you've ranked yourself, and then you get to decide, okay, what are we really going to do? What strategies are we going to select, and who is going to do what by when? And that's what happens on Wednesday. And we'll be done by 3:00 o'clock, and then you get to go to work after that. So the community involvement piece is very important. We do need that good steering committee, a very strong steering committee that is willing to put in the hours for Plan Week and put in the time after Plan Week is done. Again, the Voice of the Community Session, I want to remind everybody, 6:00 on May 15th, right here, we want your feedback. There is an ongoing commitment from that steering committee. Those folks who are going to commit to that are committing to say, okay, I will help with the implementation of this as well, and I will lead some of those tasks that we choose. So you can see, this is just a little chart of the different things in the ongoing commitment category. It's great to have people promoting all of those meetings that you have and talking to people out in the community, participating in the Plan Week, and then the implementation process. Implementation, the plan director, who is going to be Paul, he has graciously agreed to. He's going to make sure and crack the whip on everyone and make sure that they're really following up and doing what they're saying, right, Paul? Okay. Now, each strategy is going to have a strategy lead. That lead person will be responsible for making sure that that particular strategy is moving forward. The steering committee, we recommend that they meet monthly and follow up. It doesn't have to be a real long meeting. Just talk about, okay, yes, we're moving forward. We're making progress. Uh-oh, we have a hang-up. And that is where they're going to do their self, their checkup, their self-checkup there. And then every, about every three to five years, we recommend that you update your strategic plan. That's going to be up to you, but that's what we recommend. And just a few other little items, and I'm going to wrap up. This is the second strategic plan that we've done in the region. So you're pretty early in the process, and I thank you for that. We like to get these done quickly so we can get on to the implementation. Jonesboro was the first, and mainly because they were going through their Vision 2030 process at the time, and they were chomping at the bit to get done. But this is really great to have you all ready to go out here. This plan really serves as a foundation for everything else that we do, not only in the region, but here as well. You can look at it, as you're, I know that there's some comp plan work that's coming up, and we're going to try and help with that as much as we can. This is really the foundation for that. It tells your community, it tells you, here is where we want to go. What kind of policies do we need to have in place to get there? So it really is the foundation for this community to lay out those future plans. And like I said, and like Paul said, it's a larger regional process. And that's really important because it's not just you out there fighting for West Memphis. Now you're part of a larger region. You're going to have the backing of the district. You're going to have the backing of all of these other counties saying, hey, you know what? West Memphis is doing something really great, and we are all in support of it. And that is becoming more and more important in a lot of these funding circles. So I'm going to stop talking now unless you have questions for me. So let me have it. Yes?
Are there any financial resources available to implement the plans once, the, once you all get them together?
Well, I'll tell you, the planning, the grant that we have is for planning. However, that is where the district comes in. What the district is saying is, you identify your needs, and we will help you find the resources for those. There are a lot of resources available out there, but the important thing is having those in a very comprehensive and well-thought-out strategic plan. So once that is done, when you start on implementation, they are committing for the next however 20 years, 30 years, however long they're around, to really help you find the resources to implement those. And it does help you. It gives, by being a part of this process, it gives you some extra points with a lot of the agencies, so that's a big help, too. Good question.
We have a lot of dilapidated homes in the city of West Memphis. Some have been abandoned, different things of that nature, overgrown lots, especially during the summer. Will this plan have something in there to address issues such as that?
Yes, it will. It's going to have. If that, that to me is a very big quality of life issue. And so it's something that we would definitely want to address during this process and also in the housing process that James Gilliland will be doing as well.
Sounds great.
What else?
Any other questions, Jennifer?
I can count on you all to be there, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, under Committee Report, we have Public Works.
Yes, Public Works has met twice since our last meeting. We met on the 19th after city council and awarded the pavement marking project to Trafmark, Inc. for $20,750. Then we met Tuesday of this week. We discussed and approved the resolution that we just passed to approve the Southland Drive Phase 2 project. This project will be approximately $2.7 million. It's an 80/20 match. The city's match portion will be approximately $575,000. And I do think, would like to say thank you to the city administration, Mr. Martin and Mayor, for making sure that we have this because we were able to move this project up about 12 to 18 months because we had the match and could accept the money. This will finish out Southland Drive. It will link the Ingram Project and the Southland Drive East Project, and that entire area will be completed. It should be a very nice addition for the city. Under reports from the sanitation department, we've, the sanitation department has removed 3,000 tires from the city. It was discussed, the need for a code enforcement office, officer. We've scheduled a meeting of Planning and Development, the Police Department, and Public Works to meet on May the 22nd at noon to discuss issues around code enforcement. The city engineer reported that the Ingram Boulevard project, the final pavement pour will be Monday. The striping project that I just mentioned, the bid award, the contracts are being reviewed, and it should start work within the next two weeks. The signalization project is being rebid, as the bids were too high. The drainage and ditch cleaning, you'll remember the street department had leased a piece of equipment. They are having some difficulty with it because of the steep slopes on some of the ditches, but it is helpful. We also approved a temporary project to remove Beaver Dam by acquiring the use of a trapper to remove those dams. And I did want to mention again, Ms. Robinson, if you want to mention something again about the Great American Cleanup, I'll turn it over to you because that is part of our Public Works.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Taylor. Yes, I would like to make mention of this great and wonderful program we have going on in the city of West Memphis. It's going to be Saturday, May 5th. Registration starts at 8:00 a.m., and you can go and start cleaning until 12:00. We've gotten a lot of groups and organizations. I've double-checked with them. They're on point for Saturday morning, and we're beautifying a number of city places, parks, buildings. The Police Department Flower Bed, we are going to beautify that. We've started already by beautifying, or started on the Roberta Jackson Neighborhood Center, and her family has agreed to plant a rose there in her memory. And if anyone else would like to do that, there are several other people who are going to plant trees and roses in memory of their loved ones. So if that's something you want to do, even if you don't want to come and join the cleanup process, there are a lot of things that you can do. Just to say that I took part in the Great American Cleanup. there are a lot of things that you can do, just to say that I took part in the Great American Cleanup, the cleanup bliss that's going on in the City of West Memphis, Arkansas on Saturday morning. We are extremely excited about this. We hear the young lady talking about redevelopment, and of course, we want all of West Memphis to be a wonderful place to live, work, worship, and to send your children to school. We just, we look at Miss South Community College. It's just so beautifully well-groomed and manicured. And of course, we want all of West Memphis to mirror such beauty as that. So we're asking everybody to get involved. It's not too late if you want to volunteer. We've sent out a number of letters. We've gotten some responses from those letters. And Rhonda and I have been working hard, Phillip and various ones, Phillip Sorrell, it's not you, Phillip Carter, or Phillip Para. Been working quite hard on this project, and we're just looking for a great, we're looking for a great turnout. And after the cleanup is over, we're going to have a wonderful wrap-up celebration here at City Hall, where we're going to be serving food, having fun, letting the children come back and enjoy themselves, because there will be a number of children. Some of the schools in West Memphis have agreed to let some of their clubs and organizations take part, so they can get their community credit hours that's required of them to get. So we're just looking forward to everybody to come and just, Frank can come on out, too. His knees are better now. And just join in the fun. It's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you all so much in advance. And I would really like to thank the West Memphis Evening Times for giving us such wonderful coverage on this cleanup process, and all of the sponsors I have gone to, Mayor. They have agreed, so that really speaks volume of the City of West Memphis. No one has turned me down so far. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's just my naturally good looks. I don't know.
That's difficult. That's difficult to do.
Yes, I'm just teasing about that part. But I want to thank everybody so much for all of your help in this cleanup process event. And we're planning again another year. This is our first year doing it, and hopefully another year would be bigger and better. So thank you in advance.
Thank you, Lorraine. This project is, you had it well organized, and I look forward to it to turn out quite successful.
Thank you.
And I would suspect your husband, who is in the audience, would say you are difficult to tell no to.
Yes, he will say that.
You're, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
We have no appointments. Are there any additional announcements in addition to what has already been made?
Mayor, would, would it be feasible, since you've had us receive this on the law enforcement, and since Inspector Shelton's here, can we, will you take a minute and kind of talk about what the changes are?
Either that, or as I say, we'll have it up next week after you read it.
Well, I'm not sure if I read it, if I'm going to know what's different than the time before. That, that was my question.
Inspector, do you have the old copy with you?
The entirety of this is not in the old plan?
It is in the old plan. It's just been revised.
Just that portion?
I guess my question would be is, can you say that on page D. 3, paragraph, paragraph 1, under C, war, emergency, enemy attack, we added or deleted? To me, that might be helpful.
Basically, what was changed is in our response structure. I'm not sure which page it's on, but where we had an assistant chief, we don't have an assistant chief anymore, so we, we changed the rank structure to fit the structure that we have now. The, the number of people responding will be the same for each shift. It's just who's going to be in command of it.
I got a question. And it may, may not be legislative, maybe administrative, so administrative. I'm just wondering, why don't we have assistant chief? Is it financial, or they just administrative decision?
That's above my pay grade. You'd have to talk to the mayor and the chief on that.
So it's primarily in this emergency response plan, which might be involved, so that would be the difference, is this part? Okay. Okay. I, I'll, I'll try to read through it and see, be more prepared next time, so thank you.
I would like to thank Paul Lucre. I think I really irritated him. He's, he's shaking his head. No, the Roberta Jackson Neighborhood Center is being repaired. The window is in. Other things are going on there. And Paul, thank you so much. I didn't mean to, to really hound you the way I did. And of course, Phillip Sorrell helped with that project as well, so thank you so much.
Any other announcements?
I don't have an announcement, but on that ordinance that we was talking about, I really would like for us today before we leave to set up time for a work session on it.
On the, the one with the curfew?
Curfew, yes.
It's probably going to need to be a little bit more work to flesh out exactly what all. It's going to be a while. It's a work in progress.
Okay, whatever. Okay.
I don't think it'll be on your next.
Okay, well, we'll just wait.
That concludes the items of business. On our agenda, we'll move on to